I'll go ahead and call to order this Nelson County Board meeting, this work session on June 4th, 2015 at 5:00 PM at the central office. Item two on the agenda here is changes to the agenda. Do we have any?
I will just take the opportunity to point out a couple of things. As we had done on a few occasions before, we're going to ask you to make a decision on 3A, which is schematic designs for the Early Learning Center, and 4A, which is the DPPCCR position that we talked about last month. And we, since we sent this to the media, the athletic trainers contract on 3I and that 4A were placed on here, so those are new to the media. But otherwise, we're ready to go. We can proceed and describe.
Okay, well then we'll go on in on part three, which is Efficient Resource Management, 3A, which is the schematic design for the Nelson County Early Learning Center.
I'm not working with Steve. He's not calling, he's going to be sitting awhile. Guess I'll decide.
He saw you, Miss Berry. I got nervous. Steve, if you want to come on up, I'm going to turn this over to you in about 30 seconds. I've got a whole group of people, I want to do that for all this entire list of stuff, just so you know. You know, we've met, been meeting for a few months now, I guess, on the ELC in its last few weeks, or a couple of months anyway, that's where we ramped up. And we, I think, say it's saying, pretty quickly, narrowed it down to two or three scenarios that we felt like were going to work best for the school district. At the last meeting that we had, we started that meeting with two scenarios, or two schemes. And I think Cheryl's there, Mr. Salzman from BCD, Kevin, Todd, a number of folks were there, CMTA, I believe was represented, Steve and Mr. Old, a number of folks. We pretty quickly settled on this version. And the reason for that is we feel like it meets the needs of the district and the program there, and we feel like it's the least expensive of the two options that we had narrowed it down to. It's that simple. It meets the needs, and we feel like it's going to be the lesser expensive option that we got to at that point. And I know that the board has other, the district board has other priorities that they like to deal with as well. So if we can save a few dollars on this project, it obviously helps us get other projects done. So that's why this is the project we're recommending, or this is the design we're recommending to you tonight. I'll let Stephen get into the details of the drawing. You know, this does, I will say that this does pretty well max out that space there, the land we have. We were just talking a few minutes ago before the meeting, and you know, there's some additional, in addition to what you have here, there's a few additional places where we could carve out some more parking. I'm a little bit OCD when it comes to the number of parking spaces in all our buildings, but especially that one. And I think this plan calls for up to 75 spaces. There's 31 there now, 35 there now. Yeah, but we're adding, we're more than doubling that. And then you could do even more. But as far as building structure itself, classrooms, once you do this, that's pretty much going to fit in for this site, but you are, you do end up with 14 classrooms here. And as it stands now, I think the goal would be to open the 14 classroom structure when it's finished with 10 preschool classrooms and four daycare classrooms. 10 preschool classrooms will accommodate 400 students, significantly more than we have today. Daycare is more than we need today, but that accommodates some growth. If we grew just exponentially, and 15, 20 years from now, you needed more preschool space than 10 classrooms would provide, you could, things change. I mean, you obviously at that point could relocate your daycare, who knows what the program will be like at that point in time, we just don't know. But this certainly will meet the needs for many years to come. But do you want to make sure you understand that you do this, there's no adding two or three classrooms on at the end of this project. That space is pretty well maxed out, with the exception of the possibility to carve out a little more parking, which would be expensive parking. And I'll let Stephen get into the details of the design and answer questions.
Sure. I don't know, is the other drawing?
Yeah, let me try one more time and see if I mess something up and get into it. Because, collectively both being the same. Is there just name, somehow I got named, and I'm sure I'm the one that did that.
If Cora was here, this would have happened.
Michael pointed out to us last time, right now, this one and the floor plan are flipped backwards, so we'll get that fixed in the final documents. But this is the overall site plan. Currently, you come in the driveway here, into the entrance here, this is the old central warehouse, old board office with the link that we had already built in the middle. And what this shows pretty clearly is, in the dark, that would be the addition. So we're tying on to the end of the building, in the back of the building, you wouldn't see a whole very significant change in appearance at the front of the building, and we don't have to get into the entrance and reception and all of that sequence.
Stephen, what's that spot, where the little box is, right there, to your, to my right, come over to the side, right there? What is that area right there?
That is the mechanical that serves this section of the building, so...
Okay, so that's the condension units that sit out there?
And the outside air, the little company is there. And that's why we stayed away from that area with the addition, CMTA's advice. We had asked them, can we relocate it? And the cost benefit wasn't very good, they said it would be pretty costly to change that around.
I mean, that's going to be, for now on, a waste?
It is cut out, I mean, we're providing access, I don't know if it's as much waste, I mean, that's, it is filled with equipment, and we needed to provide access into that space, so. So that's the addition, it immediately opens to where the new playground is. Other changes to talk about on the site plan are, right now, your parking lot does this, so what Robin Mills has shown here is actually expanding the parking lot so that with this first piece of work, we could get up to 66 parking spaces, and that would include some parent drop-off outside the dining room door now, and leaving the drop-off over here for just the buses. It would start to separate the cars and buses.
That was an issue that was discussed.
Yeah. So the part, the drop-off would be here, and you'd just circle back around and go out the same entrance. The reason we are at 66 now, and we're showing some future parking that you could build, is really just that we started to look at, you know, where are we going to be from a budget standpoint, and what is the parking need at this point? We feel like if we're almost doubling the parking, that would be a place to stop for the moment, and then if you need parking in the future, it's a fairly easy expansion of the parking.
Where actually is the boundary, right there? Where that parking, what you just showed, we're going to...
This is, this is the end of this first piece of parking that we would...
No, I meant the property line.
Oh, the property line is down here and over here.
Okay.
This is, this is behind the first federal there. And then, of course, this is the property that you swapped with bars down.
That's where it slopes off, though. So there is more room up there where the parking is to the property line?
Not really, that's where your detention basin is. Again, it slopes off, and you've got a drainage structure down at the bottom, so this, you don't have much room. This line right here is about as far as you can go, that direction.
And out that other way is a big drop-off.
And that falls off pretty dramatically, too. Now, that's where Robin has shown us a plan where we could start to terrace that hillside and get some more parking, that's what Tim was referring to. We can get more parking on this site, but it gets more expensive every time you try to add it.
Okay, what's going in where the playground was, I mean, is currently?
That's, that would be taken with part of this parking. Yeah, that, the old playground is here, so that, actually, that being gone is what allows us to make that drop-off loop.
Drop-off in here, okay.
And with that expense, so we're jumping all over the place on there, Stephen. So with the gray area, which is the addition, that still keeps us safe as far as access back to the water tower for the city, and the water line or whatever was back there, a lot of times there's been questions about it.
Yeah, we had to change our thinking about it a little bit, but yes, we're still okay. So the water line easement is right here.
Okay.
So we've stayed away from that. At first, we were looking at taking the addition all the way up to the line of that easement, just in order to make best use of the property. We've got, what we realized, though, is that's where the hill starts to fall away, so we pulled back in order to shorten the height of our retaining walls. So we're, we've pulled it back so that the retaining wall on that side can be a lot shorter. What we had to change, though, is we are building across that existing gravel drive that goes back to the water tower. So Robin is going to rework the loop here to provide access off the backside of that loop. All you're obligated to do is provide them access, it's not necessarily that road that has to go.
I remember whenever we had partnered up, and you may remember this too, Larry, when we partnered up with the city of Orange Town, I think at that time, was it Mayor, or Mayor Schechter, I can't remember, was it Mayor Schechter? Yeah, that we had had discussion about making sure that potentially we might do something out of that bus loop to allow them to have access, that we make sure to work on with the city to...
And that's what Robin is proposing now, is kind of bringing it off the bus loop.
And does that, is that the gravel road that goes all the way up there by, take them up there on 245? No, where does that gravel road?
Yes, it goes all the way up right now, yeah.
Well, if we close that off, what happens to the rest of that, that's up there going up to 245?
You could let it grow over, or you could leave it, we could use it. We could provide an access to it off the corner here, if you want that.
Okay.
Yeah, we're not doing anything that means it has to go away.
I'm going to add for real, is there trees on the, isn't there some trees or something over toward where the new playground will be?
There is a, there is a kind of a scrubby tree line along that wire fence line, it's right along here. There's nothing significant until you get right there, there's a really significant oak tree. That's the first major tree that we thought we really needed to pay attention to. All the rest of the stuff is sort of...
You know how this tree deal goes.
There's the rest of the stuff along that line.
We don't want any issue here.
I have no idea what we're talking about.
We don't need an issue with trees.
Believe me, I've been in the board meetings.
Yes, I know, but we don't need any more. Okay.
So what I hear is, we, the things we get out of this is, we get the expansion we need for our preschool program, for that continued growth, we get to be able to bring the daycare back in-house, and even some room for growth in it. The parking, and I have had, I don't know about anybody else, but I've had a couple of the Early Learning Center staff that I know, and they go, please, can you help us do something with parking and all of this design? And I assured them that Stephen was probably thinking hard about parking as well, and we've doubled the parking, it looks like, just...
Not quite.
I would say, you said there were 31 spots?
There are 30, there's an increase of 31.
Oh, okay, increase of 31, okay. With a little bit of ability to expand even further, so, you know, which is key, I mean, it's, there are going to be times where it still will feel like not enough parking, but that's going to be on the open house night, that's going to be on the parent night for awards, or the graduation, or something like that, so.
And you've probably have already had to do this, if it's something like that where it's an evening and you don't need the bus loop, you just open the bus loop up for parallel parking.
Could we go back to the other diagram?
Yeah, we can talk in more detail about the plan. And I don't know, you could flip this if you want, since the writing's not legible anymore. There we go. So this is oriented the same way as the other one is, so this is your current entrance. The difference that Tim described between this scheme and the other scheme, one large difference is that this one requires very little renovation in the existing board office, the other scheme we had put together, reworked the board office significantly. So there's very little over there, there's very little changing in the warehouse, although we are building some things in that central play space. There's a sensory room, some storage rooms, some things like that, that will start to fill in that play space. And then, we're replacing the multipurpose room with a larger multipurpose room in order to meet the current requirements, so the existing multipurpose room will become a classroom, some restrooms off the public hallway, and an additional office and some service space. So that, that volume will be filled up with different things. And what that does, by getting that third classroom here, we've got one, two, three, we've got the four in the existing warehouse, that meant that we needed to build seven in new construction. So you've got two off the end of the existing building here, you've got a corridor that cuts through off of that interior play space to access two classrooms here, and then a corridor here that opens directly onto the playground here, in order to get these, access to those three. So what we've tried to do is keep the addition tight, consolidated, so that the construction is simpler and all together, instead of construction in different places. And one thing that just more recently we added is that just outside this door, we'll have a restroom facility in order to serve the playground. One of the challenges they've had with the preschool requirements is getting hand washing and that kind of stuff done in a timely way, according to how they're supposed to meet those requirements.
And once one little one on the playground says, I need to go to the restroom, it's contagious, so that makes it easy for them to be able to do that.
This has only got a single toilet, it's mostly about hand washing.
Okay.
But it does have that toilet for at least incidentals.
You made the comment that the, I'll call it the road-facing side, which is really the bus lane and the main entrance, that really changes...
Not significantly, you'll see that addition, and what we were going to do with that addition, we haven't shown drawings of three-dimensional proposals yet, we will have those soon. The gable profile that we started here and here, we were going to propose that we bring that again to be sort of the bookend down here, and the rest of this will be pretty simple.
What about the, are we going, the exterior, I think, was that scalloped look or whatever, are we going to kind of continue that same exterior look around?
I think so, that's the thinking at the moment.
So I mean, it would almost, unless you knew it was added on, you'd never know it was added on.
Right.
What about the big drop-off in front of the school? Could that be excavated or something? I know they're hauling dirt and building up 245 and everything.
To the right of the entrance, right?
In front of it, where the buses come in, where the loop is, where you get the loop on the right, the drop-off. Is there any way that we can think about, you know, 15, 20 years down the road, just hauling in dirt there and getting it...
I've actually already been talking with David Hill over there, I've been talking with David Hill about the possibility, he wants to get some of that filled in, too. We've been talking with him about the possibility of letting people come in and start dumping back there, you know, trying to monitor and make sure we get good stuff dumped in back there, a little more junk. If we get good stuff dumped in and start to build it up, then we can then start maybe thinking about tearing that, tearing it down.
Well, you're talking, we're talking about 15, 20 years down the road, you know, we can get that hauled in and get that up, we can use it for a drive and not build on it, but for a drive, is that a possibility?
Oh, absolutely.
So the teachers' school more is not going to hang us?
I think the monitoring would be important, because you want to make some decent compaction.
Tagging on where the drive is down, moving the drive out.
And that's going to trash.
Well, I think almost more importantly would be compaction, because if you've built it, if you build it up a good amount, and you only compact the top, you know, you could have a parking lot sliding down the hill with you.
Yeah, they got, we've already got a dirt right now for 245, I mean, he's excavaging the whole place, they're looking for places to dump rock, you know, we've got 20 years to do it, that's when we want to get started on it, and 20 years, you know, have it built up.
It might be something to talk to Robin Mills about, and get, what she could almost do, working toward a future plan, is give you criteria, you know, this is what needs to happen for anything that comes in, is criteria.
It sounds like Todd Oregon, that old voice in the back, is here thinking about that, too.
Yeah, but I worry about the same thing that Steve was talking about, I worry about the compaction, that's the biggest thing that worries me, you know, you're starting to come in and dump, and you just dump and dump and come, and all of a sudden you get to the top, and you say, well, look, our level is off. And building on it, you compact the top, you've got the bottom that never settled, it continues to settle, next thing you know, you've got a parking lot sliding down the hill, you know, it just, you know, so you've got, you've got to be careful how you do that stuff, I mean, you've got to make sure you compact it all the way, if you don't compact it all the way up, you get yourself in a mess.
With all the, with all the equipment we got there now, we got potters and high lifts and tractors and everything else, it's probably a good way to do it.
I think if we worked with David, I think if we all worked together, I think we could make that happen, and we could keep equipment there and have somebody, you know, to compact that stuff, that's the problem.
And maybe it would be as costly as, you know, you wait for it down the road.
I think you want to do it anyway for the looks.
Right.
You don't want to be like me, the early learners, saying piles, 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 all that.
Right.
So if this was what we wanted to go with, talk a little bit about the next steps, I don't know, Stephen or Tim, I mean...
If you approve this today, we will immediately package it and send it to the Department of Education for schematic design review. It's always at their discretion whether they then say they'll waive design development review or not. If they do, we could go right into construction documents, if they don't, then we've got another level of things we have to show them. But we, so, yeah, we could start construction documents pretty quickly, depending on the KDE, the things get...
So what do we have to do?
We take a motion...
I'll write the motion. We make a motion that this be the design that we go with and ask Stephen and whoever else to go next steps?
Yes.
Motion by Ms. Page?
Second.
Second by Ms. Berry, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Stephen, appreciate it.
Thank you, Stephen.
Exciting times there.
Little people.
Yep, exciting times for the little people. Moving on to 3B, which is the Nelson County High School Energy Efficiency Update.
It's more of an information item than anything else, I think, you know, we've done a lot of work at Nelson County High School, we did a lot of work in Cox's Creek about a year ago, I guess, and the numbers on those projects are looking really good. Matter of fact, we'll get you a report as to exactly how we end the first fiscal year. I'll be looking to get that to you, but, you know, we're really happy with the way most of that has gone, really, I'm very happy with the way the costs have gone. When I look at utility bills, and when I look at what we've spent in the last 10 years on outside contractors, whether it be electricians, or humidity issues, or whatever it might be, we've spent a lot of money. We haven't spent any of those dollars this year. And it's directly a result of the performance contract you all approved better than a year ago that they did last summer, and I think folks at Cox's Creek and at Nelson County are realizing more comfortable buildings as a result, and we're realizing some savings. One of the things we've identified, we were hoping to be able to avoid, you know, we do through the maintenance program, Kevin and his guys, every year, change controllers, and they make changes in parts and pieces throughout the school district, you know, we buy controllers and change them out, we have them on the shelf over there, I guess, and now, sometimes we have to send off, you know. But, you know, it's just a normal operating procedure for us, any entity of our size or larger, it's part of what you do. We were hoping to be able to limp along at Nelson County High School with some almost 20-year-old controllers for a little while longer. After a year with this, all this new equipment and things working well, one of the only remaining issues we're having are the parts of the building where the, we're still using 17, 18-year-old equipment to control things. We've talked through it, Mr. Page's been involved in it, our guys, we've talked to CMTA, we brought in another consultant to review what our guys think, along with the folks from CMTA, and that person agrees, has been supportive of the plan going forward. So what we'd like to share with you is a plan over the next two or three months, is to replace all those old controllers at Nelson, the remaining controllers at Nelson County High School, with new equipment that will match what we just put in, does that make sense by saying it right, Kevin?
Yeah.
That's the good news, the bad news is, it's going to cost you $90,000 to do that. And working with the contractor, again, this, but this, just so you know, these are things we do now, we just don't normally do them in this big a chunk, I guess is one. But one of the things we've worked out with the vendor, that we'll be buying these controllers from, and I've actually had this conversation with the auditor, just to make sure everybody's on the same page, is we're going to do half of it, if you, if you guys, unless someone sees a problem with it, and again, we're looking at this as more just a normal operating procedure piece, we're going to do half of it this month, and we'll be billed accordingly, so there'll be about a $45,000 cost to this fiscal year. We'll get a second bill, probably around the first of September, for the work we do as we get into the next fiscal year, so we'll be splitting it over two fiscal years, so it's not any huge impact in either one. And then what that will leave, the only thing that will leave at Nelson County High School that makes it a little different than Thomas Nelson or Foster Heights, is in the older portion of the building, we currently have a zone system. Kevin, help me out here, if I start singing. Where, right at Thomas Nelson, Kevin can dial into his computer and go to room 107. At Nelson County, he can, in parts, part of the building, he can do that, but in the other part of the building, he can only control a block of rooms together, and that's where we have zones. And what we'd like to do, not now, but over the next two or three years, is eliminate those zones, which will give added comfort and more control for the rest of Nelson County High School. We're not asking to do that now, we're just making you aware of the fact that is something we'll be doing through the maintenance program over the next two or three years, and once that's complete, we'll have kind of built that all in and swallowed it a bite at a time, and with no, hopefully no huge impact in any particular period of the budget. And when we're done, we'll have a system over here, HVAC-wise, just like we have our other brand-new buildings from one end of the up, what HVAC, control center.
The unions are still old, but the way of control is...
Well, thank you.
When I go over there, there's some of that building that's still hot. I mean, used to, it used to be D-hauls, a hole that you had to wear a long time. Now, it's hot, and it doesn't, and I know, somebody asked me, why is the, why is the heating people out there all the time? I said, because it's not right yet, you know, Adams out there. So I said, because...
He spends a lot.
He spends a lot, I know he does, but he, and I said, well, we're working on to get it right, you know, it's going to get right.
Yeah, I compare what we're talking about tonight, you know, a couple of years ago, a year or two ago, we, you know, we changed the lockers out at school, they needed to be changed out, they look a whole lot nicer, just maintaining a building, an older building, that's what we're proposing to do here. The lockers are just a little more visible, the floor in the library is a little more visible to folks, no more important, this is just, maybe more important. So that's another comparison, I think it's something that needs to be done. Again, we're not asking you to sell bonds or anything, we want to just do it through the normal operation, the budget, through the maintenance budget, and, you know, we're working through that with the vendors and think they'll be out there.
How old is the Nelson County High School now?
69, I believe, if we know who it is.
So 45 years, 46 years.
First one was 97.
Yeah, so, so, I mean, the reason why I'm asking that, I mean, it's a good-looking building. I've seen buildings that were half that age in the state that don't look half as good. And so, I mean, we're squeezing a lot of value out of a 45, 46-year-old building, and, you know, this is just kind of one of those, it sounds like a maintenance type of item, continue to make sure we squeeze another 10, 20, who knows how many years out of it.
And I will share with y'all, we've had several of those old controllers go bad, we're paying about $15,000 to repair it, because you can't get them any more new. And ECT has priced us $1,600 for a classroom new controller.
Really?
And so we'll have consistency across a lot of our controllers, which is something else we've tried to do for your staff, just to make it easier.
There'll still be a time that these new ones will be obsolete, it's just the way it is. way it is. But, you know, to put it all together, to get it all balanced, you've got to do this. There's no way around it.
Ms. Berry, you were.
You had mentioned that you were, that the cost of this, you were going to spread out over two fiscal years. Is, do we have an option of maybe getting some discount if we were to do it all at once to where instead of, you know, spending, you know?
Well, then actually, if we were to spread this out and do them as each one goes bad, we're saving about $40,000 already done it by the $90,000.
Yeah, I don't think, I, I, it's a good question. I understand where you're going with that. Don't think that by paying them a month or two, I'm going to pay them in July, in September now. I, I would be paying them in July, maybe all in July or maybe all in July, August. The reason for the delay to September, it allows us to justify, again, I've already had this conversation about this exact issue. Not, there's no vagueness to it at all. I made it very clear, this is what we want to do. And the auditor did agree that if we do it this way, he'll support part of that being an expense in fiscal 16 and part of it being an expense in fiscal 15. Uh, you know, but I don't think we can realize really any more savings by, by paying just a month or so earlier. Uh, it's a good idea.
Well, what, it sounds like what you're asking. So if it was going to be $130,000 if we bought them onesie, twosies, I'm just estimating.
No, that's not why. No, I'm saying if, if they told you, let's say, I don't know how many you're buying, and the total cost you're saying is going to be $90,000 split over two years. Okay, so if it being built twice, so did, with the vendor, did you say, okay, since we're buying in bulk, do we get a, a discount, you know, to where it's not $90,000 or maybe it's $80,000 or?
Yeah, and I think I can answer that. They're actually going to do all the work and they're just going to wait and build us in September.
So that's already been?
Yeah, they give us the bottom line.
Okay.
They're going to do all the work as soon as they get the controllers in. And they're just holding the bill until we can pay it for another fiscal year.
That's, that's where I was going with my comment. You, you made the comment that we're already saving about $40,000. So if we were to have bought these as onesie, twosies, it would have been about 130 grand. But because we're saying we want to do it all, they're knocking 40 grand off. It's just we're going to pay it in two checks.
Well, and the only way we're able to divide it into two fiscal years is because this fiscal year ends 27 May. Yeah, I like it. It's good.
That's all. Okay, so after we get these put in and everything, so it will equalize the building?
Well, we still may have some mechanical units that need to be, but it'd be easier for me to tell.
Uh, will we need Adam here as much?
No.
That's what I'm saying. I mean, I feel like he's probably camping.
Yeah, he is, he is. So he knows, he knows how important it is to us.
I know it because he knows they're going to be, yeah.
And I'll tell you, we've had times where these old controllers, we'd come in in winter time and all the set points would be negative two and two.
Yeah.
And the room's cooling.
Yeah.
So that.
I know.
So that's why he's out here because I'm calling at five in the morning.
But we're not paying him anything to be here, just so you know.
No, I know we're not. I mean, that's the sad part of it. But I, I'm telling you, mine grazed away a long time ago and it's not good. It, it's just not good.
Right.
It, it's just now to the point where I don't hear kids complaining or parents saying they didn't have to put coats on.
Right.
And I had to put a sweater on, but they don't have to put a coat on.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's a big, that's a big difference. So I appreciate the help. I mean, yeah.
I think it'll make it a lot better over there. And eventually we'll have to change some equipment happens.
But it's okay, you know. Got to have a good environment for kids to learn and that's the way it is.
You heard the next time?
Yep, and we're going on to three C, budget adjustment for buses.
This is another information item. In May, you all approve every year. This year, no different, uh, tentative budget. Uh, we approved an allocation for school buses, $550,000. We operate a fleet of jets here for this, this one, uh, of about 80 buses. The, uh, the ideal rotation for those buses, keeping them in your fleet's about 14 years. That's recommended to us by the state folks, of traffic, pupil transportation folks. Uh, that's how long we, we realize depreciation through the seat calculation, et cetera, et cetera. And we've got buses today, what's our oldest bus, 96?
We're selling 96s this year, 96s, 97s.
So clearly we keep them longer than 14. And we've had to do, part of that is because these guys do a good job maintaining our buses. If they don't, they rotate buses around, they don't, you've got a 20,000 mile a year route, they don't stay on that forever. They, they, they do a good job with that. Uh, they maintain those buses, but, uh, part of it is because we've had to cut the purchase of buses a few times. Because when we get surprised financially, and we've had that happen where we've had to seek reductions and what have you over the years, uh, there's not a lot of large, uh, line items in your budget where you can go save a lot of money. Most of it's salary, or most of it are the utility bills or, or things that you really, it's really hard not to go cut on short notice. Buses almost always the first place we go. So these guys have had to manage that. They've done a good job with it. Um, so we have in our budget for next year, uh, to purchase six buses, $550,000, about $90,000 apiece. Um, and Jeff and Todd came to me last week, I guess. We've been talking about this for some time, about, uh, some other issues we have that we've really sort of ignored until it becomes an emergency. And that's some of our other vehicles in the district. Uh, they brought to my attention that in 2001, we bought, again, we were one of those linear years, not an empty year with purchase of buses, but in 2001, Jeff, we bought four buses. So what they would like to do, based on some other issues that have arisen, yesterday we had a transmission go out of a vehicle that we use for our childcare programs. Uh, this is a vehicle, this is one example of a vehicle that we operate. This was a surplus vehicle we bought. We drove to Frankfurt and bought for $800, 12 years ago or something. These are the type of vehicles we operate.
Blazer.
Yeah, it's, uh, you know, we've had it for a long time. I don't know how long we've had it, but we paid a few hundred dollars for it, uh, through the state surplus folks. I've been driving it for a number of years. Transmission went out of it. Uh, it is, uh, we could buy a replacement vehicle for less than it would cost us to put a transmission in it. Like Jeff and Todd are right to come and recommend if we, if they tell us we can get by with four buses to try to address some of these other vehicle needs in the district. And what they have had is a recommendation to replace four vehicles in the maintenance fleet. And there's some trickle-down here. I'm going to let Jeff come up and explain to you this trickle-down because I'll mess this up. Uh, but what we'll be doing is taking the money you've already allocated in your budget for buses and spending, buying four buses, spending about $180,000 less on buses and spending a little over half of that, saving the district about 70, uh, that we can set aside for something else, but spending about 110 for four maintenance vehicles. Now, Jeff, you want to go through the vehicles in particular?
Well, we've got, right now, we have eight vehicles out of 20 that are 2000 and older. We've got a 95, a 97, 98, and some 99s and 2000s. Uh, Kevin drives a 97 Dodge that's having, uh, transmission issues. It's pointless to put a transmission in 97, you know, you wouldn't get your money back. Uh, I'd like to replace Kevin's with a, a new truck, give him a four-wheel drive. He's out checking roads in Wintertown. Needs a reliable four-wheel drive. Uh, Brenda Hickman's Blazer, the transmission went out. Todd drives an old-three Tahoe that would suit Brenda better. We could move the Tahoe to Brenda, give Todd a new four-wheel drive vehicle, truck. Um, and then we have Ray Jury drives a 2000 Chevrolet service truck. We could, we have a 95 Chevrolet that is our maintenance, our transportation service truck. It's got the air compressors and the tools in it. Um, and we have a 98 that is our maintenance spare in case those guys need work on their truck. We could take Ray's 2000, make it the maintenance spare, give Ray a new truck with the service bed on it. And then we have a 2006 Ford, which is a diesel. Uh, it's a six-liter diesel, which is not Ford's most reliable diesel. We spent a lot of money on this six-liter. We could take that six-liter and make it the transportation maintenance truck, which would be driven, you know, once a week.
Yeah.
And, and we wouldn't have to dump money in that and replace that truck with a new service bed truck. And that would put us, you know, we still have some old vehicles. And once you get into, uh, Dr. Lance's old Buick, we still have, it's an old one, a Sabre. Uh, I called Franklin, we had a seatbelt that went bad. We called Franklin family and it's obsolete. They, they can't get it. So we had to go on eBay and find a, a belt in a salvage yard in Arizona and buy it because you have to have the seatbelt. It's got to be safe. But, uh, you know, all these vehicles, these eight vehicles are just obsolete and we need to start moving before we get bit, uh, in the end.
So if I follow, so, uh, two less buses, which is roughly 180,000, what you're describing there, Jeff, is, is a little more than 90,000, which is why we got to, we would have to remove two buses out of the, the purchase this year.
Right.
But then that roughly 70,000, I think, I heard you say, we could possibly bank that and could we, because I, I, I've learned very well from you, Jeff, that every time you don't recycle, but don't replace one in that cycle of 14 to 16 years, it starts adding up on.
Right.
You know, so you skip two this year. Well, next year we probably should be buying six. Well, maybe it's really eight we should be buying in. So, and I, and those aren't actual numbers, but I think you followed me. So would we be able maybe to make sure that that little bit of 70,000, that we kind of set it to the side, earmarking it towards buses down the road? Because I would hate for us to get back into that cycle again if we're, well, we need another six buses and we're having to try and scramble and find, whereas we already had earmarked that 70 for this budget. Well, let's just kind of keep it sitting in that quote "bus" piece of it. Does that make, there we go ahead.
Before you answer that though, did I understand, um, earlier when Tim opened up, that what we're doing is, uh, we were planning on buying six buses and they would actually be replacing four buses?
Right. Okay. So we're kind of ahead of the game there anyway.
The, the way this is coming in the cycle is 14 years ago, we decided instead of buying six, we'd only buy four.
Okay.
So this is maintaining the same number of active buses in the fleet.
You do it by model year.
Okay.
This year we're taking the, the 2000 models off the road. They'll be spares.
Okay.
But we only bought four in 2001. Next year, we'll, we'll only need to pull four off the road to make spares to keep our rotation.
Okay, okay. But it does kind of make sense what I was thinking there. Instead of all of a sudden that the remainder part of that 180 for two buses, all of a sudden it kind of just absorbing into someplace else. Let's try and make sure that we don't shortchange our bus fleet down the road.
We don't want to get in a situation where we start buying four every year because that's easy money. I mean, some years we can buy any buses, but that doesn't mean we, we can't budget for new buses on that year.
I think it's critical we keep that budget for those six buses there. Uh, if we have a year like this year, uh, maybe several years down the road, there may be another, another year may arise where we can take care of another infrastructure issue. But by doing this, it's going to eliminate, I think, I mean, I think if you look at the age of these vehicles, um, I, I drive one of the oldest vehicles of anybody I know and it's an old-three, you know, and these are all, we're talking about vehicles that are significantly older than that. Uh, and, uh, you know, we, if we continue to go and don't replace them, eventually we're going to end up with having to replace a lot more than four. Or spending an awful lot of time, uh, at a bus garage maintaining these vehicles.
Catch them up and drive them.
Right. Where you put a, you put transmission in Kevin's truck and it's 186,000 miles for transmission and a month later the engine goes. So it's just kind of a shame.
Was there some kind of a financial deal by buying the buses? We went through to, to save money, uh, the program set up?
Kista, Kista program.
We, we funded, uh, well, you don't want to save any money. What it does is it finances them for you. Uh, we did that one year, um, you know, and if a district's in a position where they really got to have buses, but they get blindsided by a budget issue and they don't have any money for them, but they can't say, they've got to buy them. Kista's a mechanism to finance them over 12 years. I think it's 12, 12 or 14-year financing vehicle for them. It's a pretty low interest rate, uh, and that, that is an option for you. Kista's the same program, the same vehicles when we use to, uh, sell our surplus buses. So that is an option if you ever get in a position and, uh, you've got to buy them and you don't have the money.
So what are we going to buy? I mean, are we, what are we going to buy?
We're going to buy. You tell me. I, I think I got this right. Two, two-wheel drive, uh, single cab maintenance trucks with a utility bed on. Very similar to the maintenance trucks you see now, just the newer versions of those. These are all in a state price contract. These are all, uh, I, I haven't priced a truck personally, but I can tell you the, the, the most expensive vehicle on here is the four-wheel drive crew cab truck. And we're going to be paying $29,381 for that. Four-wheel drive crew cab. That's on state price contract, yes ma'am.
And I looked, before I came here, I looked at Enterprise Rental sale. And they're selling a, a new crew cab with 31,000 miles for $33,000. So by the state contract, I mean, and even, you know, used trucks, we could buy used. But when you get it 2007, 2008, you're as much money as, as what these new trucks are.
Yeah, that's why I'm buying used ones anyway.
You can, you can buy them on a state price contract. I'm telling you, for, for the price we get, I mean, if you look at those quotes that we have over there, I mean, the show, you know, the backlog, the MSRP, you know, we're saving, we're saving, what, Jeff, about 12,000 in, 12,000 on the truck, but we're saving versus what it costs.
And it's new with warranty. It still carries the same warranty as a, as a new vehicle.
Now I want to ask something else. I know you all looked into it, but I, I have this running out of leasing. Is that, that's not a good idea, is it?
Well, I don't think it would be because again, we, we keep our vehicles so long. You know, uh, we, we're going to keep these vehicles 20 years probably. I mean, we're close to it. I mean, most of them, the ones we're replacing are almost 20 years old. I think if you do the math, I, I have not done, looked into leasing a vehicle for the district, honestly. But I think just my, my number sense up here tells me if I'm going to keep a vehicle for 18 years, I'm going to lose if I lease it. Uh, I'm going to win if I pay, especially if I'm getting this kind of price on it.
Yeah.
Typically leasing, either if you cycle through every three to four years or if you are a private entity, not a public entity. The private entity gets taxed, which, which we don't.
Right. I'm not, I'm not familiar with anybody in the public sector leasing vehicles, but there may be a program. I'm not familiar with it though.
Okay. I'm just thinking in terms of, uh, like, uh, the ones that maybe drive the most and do the most, you know what I mean? I mean, the gold will use the most mileage and it being a Sabre as far as maintenance or anything else on it. I'm not saying the whole fleet. I'm just saying maybe two or three that use them and drive so hard.
But it's my understanding that once you reach a certain mileage, then you're starting to get hammered per mile.
You don't get the price that you're giving them for.
Right.
You're getting it at that other price.
Yeah, okay. So that's the only ones we're buying?
Yes.
Did you, you got the two service trucks?
Oh, yeah.
Two three-hour time service trucks and two, one four-wheel drive crew cab pickup truck and one four-wheel drive regular cab pickup truck.
Are these tow trucks or?
Three-quarter ton.
Three-quarter.
Actually, actually, it would be, actually, it would be a, a extended cab. It'd be a crew cab and an extended cab.
Okay. Are all four of them three-quarter ton? Yes. Okay.
All four of them. The two, the two pickup trucks would be four-wheel drives. Those would be what Kevin and I'll drive. We, 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 she's got a four-wheel drive. That's the parts of those. The reason for the one crew cab is so that we have something. So if we go to some kind of a training or something, we can get four, four-ton guys in if we need to go somewhere, you know?
Okay.
For Cheryl and his tech trip, you know, we went for, you know, the playgrounds and stuff like that. We'll go, we've got something, we can get in and go.
Okay.
And then the four buses.
And four buses, okay.
Thanks, Jeff. Appreciate it. Uh, three D, which is salary schedules and information?
Primary change that you see in this document, you'll throw it out, obviously see our new logo there on the cover, courtesy of Becky Armstrong. She's the finance department artist.
Thanks. Thanks, guys.
There's, you've got the calendars that, uh, that you approved, I think in December. This year, we went ahead and included the preschool calendar too. Uh, then you get into your, your first salary scale, schedules. Excuse me. Can you rotate that, Anthony? Is there a way to do that?
Sometimes there is.
Sometimes there are not.
All right. Uh, and this is identical to what you have on the books now, except it's, every cell has been increased by the mandatory 2%. We have, uh, had a couple of different folks double-check my math to make sure I didn't mess anything up, and they tell me that they're all right. So all these, uh, So all these cells have been increased by 2% over the corresponding cell last year. Any questions on that schedule? If you look at the bottom there, that is based on 186-day certified calendar.
Sometime I'd like a lesson on how you move from one step to the next.
Just do that.
I just have a curiosity.
Uh, if you're, go ahead.
Well, y'all jump in and catch me before I mess something up today. Most of our folks are gonna, most of our teachers are gonna come in on this column with the bachelor's and the rank three. I got that right?
Well, between that and ranked. I mean, within five years, they have to get their master's.
Yeah, I guess I'm, so if you think about that first year teacher that's starting out, they're, most of them are gonna show up with that, with that, in that column when they first start teaching and then they can build up. But after five years, they've gotta move over. They've gotta start that master's degree, get it done. And then you can add on from there. But that's where most of our certified folks are gonna be in just as last.
Tell me something, how does a certified go down here to rank five? How do you get $26,714?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
It's emergency certificate with 64 to 95 hours.
Yeah, we don't have.
It's on a contract and.
Okay, well we don't have any of those.
No, no we don't.
We don't have any of the 128 emergency, do we?
I don't believe so.
Because the only thing I remember, emergency was given to a person that if you didn't have a teacher to teach a certain subject and you had to, you had to ask for an emergency through Frank. Is that true or not?
Yeah, I mean, we.
It's still, it's still like that now?
Yes.
Okay.
We do that rarely.
Yeah, I know, but I mean, it happens sometimes.
We have virtually no, Sarah help me, correct me if I'm wrong. Virtually, 100% of our certified employees are in the far right four columns.
That's what I'm saying, we don't even really concern, well because we have to. But the state requires us to have that present, but we don't have, because I don't have one.
I think, I think that's exactly the way I understand it, yes.
Yeah, the state requires us to have it, so that's the reason why it's there, okay.
Uh, this is your employee index page. These are your employees in the district that receive an index. If you see something noted in red, that's because that's a proposed change. The only change on this page is the Director of Student Support. We have a person moving from one job in the district to another job in the district and we wanted to keep their salary the same. I think that's the, that's why we're proposing that change.
Run that by me again.
Mr. Orme might be able to explain that better than I can. Not to pass the buck, but I'll do it.
Well, we've got staff moving around from one director position to another. We wanted to keep them all and not cut pay just because we were moving from one position to another. When the, when the accountability and the responsibilities are very similar, it didn't make sense to cut the pay.
I guess I'm lost on this. Run that by me again. Let's just say pay is, oh, you have to tell me that.
Okay.
That sounds sick and intimate.
So if, if, if we've got a, somebody that moves from one director position to another, similar responsibilities, similar contracts, just a different set of.
It's a lateral.
It's a lateral move, yeah, thank you for helping me.
Okay.
Human resources.
I thought you said, because that doesn't sound real good.
No.
When you say goes from one position to another and with the same, same pay.
We had, we had a lateral move that was gonna lead to a cut in pay.
And one of them is a Director of Student Support.
Yep.
And what does that person do?
A little bit of everything, but it includes HR. It includes supervision of frisky, supervision of nursing, supervision of counselors. There's a whole wealth of things.
And that's a new position?
No, it's not a new position.
I mean, not a new position, but a reworded position. Is that reworded? No, we've always had this? Well, how about that?
She's sitting right over there behind you, that helps you.
Well, Ms. Tennessee, how you doing? I didn't know that was your official, I'm sorry, I thought you were just HR, I'm sorry.
No, we, we set her up several years ago, she's a lot more in HR. That's just the.
Well, me HR handles a whole lot of things. Yeah, okay, move, move along please.
She started off on a doctor and now she wanna give her a raise.
Yeah. Just move along, I'm sorry.
The next page, there's no changes. Actually, the next two pages of, if you, if you wanna go back.
Whoa, whoa.
I forgot, I keep forgetting, we've got a couple of new board members here. Let me go just for a second. Salary classified employees, that's just a list of those folks in the district. How many contract days they have, that has not changed. That's been, I don't think we've had a change there for some time, for a few years anyway. And the next page after that is your extended employment schedule, which lists extended days folks receive, certified folks in most of cases. Frisky directors you see are at the top of the list, frisky directors and ag teachers. And they, they're 240-day employees by statute or by regulation. I think ag teachers are statute, I think maybe frisky or reg, I'm not sure. But we couldn't cut them if we wanted to.
Someone at the state tells us what we got there.
You got it. Now, a few years ago, a few years ago, I mean, this is before Mr. Orme was here when, when there were some serious budget cuts and days were cut. The rest of folks, we used to have 187-day calendar. And folks were 240 days. Those folks are now 239, the exception are these folks because of statute or reg, if that makes sense. But then you've got your principals listed and counselors and instructional coaches and librarians. And you'll see all the extended days that, that apply throughout those categories there. School nurses at the bottom, they get three extended days. They do drug testing and CPR training and so forth and so on in the summer. Your certified substitute teaching scale?
I got a question.
Yes ma'am.
Okay. Who sets this rate?
You do.
We do?
Yeah, you're getting ready to right now?
Okay.
Well, the next.
Totally, I know.
But we do, I mean, we, we compare to see how we stack up against surrounding in the region.
And we did increase it last year.
Yep.
Can I comment now?
Yeah.
I don't like it.
What about it?
I think it's too cheap. Because you know exactly what a substitute has to do. And I've never felt that a substitute is, is, because I used to have to get those substitutes. And when you are made aware that some of these substitutes really have a tough time in some of these classes, that is not enough compensation to me.
Well, so let's, let's go back and do a little bit of history. We did change these and we raised these just last year. And the reason that we did that very specifically is because we were having trouble getting our jobs filled and it was happening too often. And we, we had a couple of rough days when there, we had the flu, we had stomach flu, seems like back in the winter. And we got down pretty low and Linda and Sarah were making a lot of phone calls in the morning. But for the most part this year, I think we've been in pretty good shape. So I understand the concern and I'll be the first person in the district to say, I would love to pay people what they're worth on both sides. Because sometimes people get paid more than they're giving us. And sometimes we, most of the time, we pay a whole lot less than what we're getting. And this is certainly one area that we would love to do that. But I will say, we have been able to keep our jobs filled on a much better basis after we increased that rate last year.
And we did do a lot of research last summer, last year, in areas around, I mean, in all counties around to try to make sure that our rates did compare with ours. And, and our rates are pretty even with most of the counties around us in what they're earning.
See, that's where I have, I don't wanna sound negative, negative. But that's another one of those deals, like Diane said. Comparing them around counties doesn't interest me as much as getting good substitutes. I mean, that's just the way I feel. I don't think comparing us to Marion County or us to Washington County, I just don't think it's, I don't think it's right. I don't think it's fair. I think there's other, each county is individual and I think ours is unique too. And that pay to me is just not, not acceptable in my eyes. Because like I said, I've lived through the stuff.
Do you have that study from last year with those rates?
I don't have it with me, but I couldn't buy it.
Yeah, I would like to see that.
That might be helpful to have that to where, you know.
The perspective.
And again, yeah, I mean, the goal here is for our district to be the district of choice. And whether you're an employer or, you know, a student, let's, let's become the district of choice. And, you know, so let's take a look at it and really see, are we, you know, competitive? Or do we wanna, you know, raise the bar and let's, let's hire, you know, talent and.
Right. And I know people that have degrees that will not sub because that pay is what it is.
Well, and I, I, I heard you quietly say whenever we were back on the salary schedule page, just reading about, I, I think what you were saying was I think teachers ought to be the most highly paid people.
I did.
Profession. And, and you know, I would probably say any of us that are in the education field would agree that, with that. You know, there's always that argument of, well, the doctor saves a life. Well, there was a teacher that taught that doctor. You know, you can, you can get into that discussion. And the same thing would be here with the substitute piece as well. While we probably all would like to be paying quite a bit more, and it wasn't, but maybe 10 years ago, I think, and Tim, you probably are the, probably the historian on this, or maybe Ms. Wilson would know. 10 or so years ago, we were probably top 20 in the state as far as ranking of average teacher salary.
16.
16.
And that was about 10 years ago, it was five.
That's our 18.
And how that has changed quite a bit, again, because of the reduction in the state seat monies, where we've had to kind of keep salary schedules flat. Of course, the 2% this next year and the 1% that was required this year was a semi-unfunded mandate from the legislature. I'll, I'll use semi-unfunded because there was some funding, but it wasn't 100% covered for us. But I've heard you say that several times. Yeah. So it is one of those, and I can remember Mr. Raker, who was on the board for eight years, several times he would say, you know, it's a shame we've seen our average salary ranking slide. But there's so many factors that have contributed that. Not that, not that we wanted it to slide, but factors out of our control.
Well, but you still, even today, I hadn't looked at the number recently, we're still in the top 25, I think.
Sure.
Is that about right, Mr. Orme?
Within the last two years, yes.
25. And we know we're not anywhere close to the top 25 in revenue per pupil, district wide. So we're doing pretty well over here. We're managing to take what money we have and getting it in the hands of the teachers. And if you look at, look at it like that, and I go back to about five years ago, maybe less than that. You know, there was an analysis done by a group that, that looked at value in education. We were, we ranked pretty highly in that. I'd have to go back and find that. But, but as far as what we spend and how we spend our money, we were ranked pretty highly there. But I agree, I probably wouldn't substitute teach for $70. But I will say, if you, if you go back to last month in the working budget, one of those pies had a, had an item in there of about $350,000 for substitute teachers. And if we increase that rate, that section of the pie gets bigger. And it means I gotta take it from someplace else is the only thing. And I would, considering we just changed it last year, we really changed those rates pretty substantially from a percentage standpoint last year. If we could see if we could get through this year, see what kind of impact we have in getting subs, maybe come back and look at, and we've got that 2% raise that we've gotta absorb this year. And, you know, there's quite a bit of turnover in the district, you know, we've got folks leaving and coming in. And it'll be literally right up to the last minute to put that working budget together after that September 5th payroll, for me to be able to give you an exact number for salary cost, which is the whole starting point in the budget for this year. But I'll feel a lot better then and would be a little uncomfortable with increasing something else now, personally.
Well, I just think you get what you're paid for and for $70 I would, you know, we need the best and you don't get it if, if it's.
What percentage we have from last year, this year?
We went from 63 to 70, wasn't it? Is that right?
Um, the salary increase?
I can't, I can't, I'd go back and look at it percentage wise. But it went up.
It was significant.
And I will tell you what we did to try to offset some of the increased costs. What we did for, we increased the daily substitutes. Somebody sick, call them in.
Yeah.
For retired teachers, we were paying those folks their daily wage threshold, I think. And then we, but we went back to paying them $125 a day, which offset some of the cost for giving everyone else a raise, if that makes sense. So you went from some teach, some subs getting a really high salary and others getting a much, much lower salary to closing that gap between those two, if that makes sense. Retired teachers still making more, they're just not making, the difference is not near as great as it was. That helped us absorb that increase.
Yeah, because I used to find that a retired teacher, I don't know about now how thrilled they are, but usually retired teachers don't want to sub. Because they've had a, they've had 27 and 30 years of it, you know. And then some I was lucky enough to get on a steady basis because they knew what I would give them. You know, what classes was it? Because they didn't wanna have to, you know, they weren't big on the deal like PE or some of those things. But if they were an English and retired teacher, they didn't mind, they didn't mind doing it. But I just looked at that yesterday and I thought, you know, that's just not, that's just not good for me. It's just not good.
It's not, it's not a lot, that's for sure.
No, it's not a lot.
They won't get an earthly reward, but they'll get a heavenly reward.
Oh, okay. Star in their crown, huh? Yeah. Oh gosh.
Extra service?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, the extra service schedule, this is a, there's a couple of minor changes from what you have this year. One of the things we've had an issue with, on this page, there's three. There's the alarm callouts at the top. And there's at the bottom, there's a district health coordinator. Ms. Wilson can describe to you the health coordinator. I think what we have now is that one of our district nurses is doing that health coordinator role and not getting paid for it.
This is the one that we talked about at the last meeting and you said if they're doing more, they're getting more money, I think.
And, well, that's exactly what we're trying to do here is at least, you know, say thank you and give something for that work that's being done. It's not a lot, but it is something and that's, that's that. See, at the top, you know, we have alarm systems in every one of our schools.
Somebody's gotta answer.
And, you know, we've gone back and forth on this. Right now, you know, it's, our maintenance guys get called out. When they get called out, you pay somebody time and a half because they get called at midnight. If it's a principal, maybe that principal's at a away football game or maybe that principal lives in another town and it's a half hour, 45 minutes before they can get there. And we just felt like, you know, for not a tremendous amount of money, if you look at the high schools, we're proposing $800 each, that's for a whole year. We're proposing to start out $350 for your middle schools and elementaries. And, and I think, the way I look at that is it's an incentive to control alarm calls out, okay? We want the alarm set, but we want, we wanna know who's in the building. And we don't want alarm, alarms going off. And if someone has an incentive for there to be virtually none of those, but the alarm continues to be set, I think we all win. And they, they get $800 or 350 if they're in an elementary school. But we come out ahead, I think. And we're no longer paying maintenance guys to go out at midnight driving one of your vehicles, maybe a new one now, you know, to go to the school to see what, what happened to cause that alarm to go off. So you're looking at $5,000 district wide. And I bet you, if I went and just looked at overtime costs associated with maintenance guys getting called out for alarms, it's at least that. It's at least that. And so we just thought we'd try it.
That, that doesn't mean they're still not gonna go out. It just.
That doesn't mean they're still not going to go out, it just means, you know, false alarms.
I'm not sure.
Well, we think, I mean, if there's an alarm, then somebody will go out. But we think that there will be better incentive for that building to be shut down and secure from the get-go.
Because they've got skin in the game.
Because if I'm the one that's getting that call, and I've got a flat rate, and I get called and called and called, I'm going to go to the people that I know are not securing the building, and I'm going to have a chat and say, I ain't getting paid for this.
Are they getting called off, called out because of a heat problem, or they're getting called out because somebody moved the door and set off the alarm?
No.
So maintenance is going out there doing the alarm instead of the police?
When the police go, we get called as well.
There has to be someone from the school district.
Yeah, we meet them there. You know, and in some cases, it's, you know, it's an assistant principal, or, you know, but most of the time, honestly, it's one of our maintenance guys. And, again, I think, if I'm the person that signs up for that $350 for the entire year stipend, whopping $22 a month after taxes, I'm going to limit my trips to the school via alarm costs.
What is this doing now, because the maintenance guy is going out there? So what's, who's going out there?
It'd be whoever the principal would designate to go out.
Just the maintenance guy.
And we wouldn't be paying time and a half or double time.
In theory, it could be the PE teacher who lives two doors down from the school has said, I will do it, I never travel anywhere, and I'll be the one that shows up at 2:00 in the morning if the alarm goes off. But most likely, if it's the person that lives in Lexington and commutes every day, they're not going to raise their hand and say, I'd like to be considered.
And we wouldn't select them.
Yeah, we would hope that they wouldn't even raise their hand, I mean, so, I mean, it is, it's a, someone within that building that has either volunteered and nobody else volunteered, or that principal said, well, between the two of you, I think one of you would be good, does either of you all have a preference? And they may say, oh, Tim, tag, you're it, I'm putting you down as that person.
So basically, that's an answering service?
A physical body.
They'll get called, the alarm company will call that number that we put. We say, Mr. Peake, is the alarm call out person in Boston, the alarm goes off a few seconds, you're going to get a phone call, and you're going to be expected to go up there and find out what's going on. And the police will meet you there, because the police are getting called as well. But we have staff go to identify, you know, what caused that to happen.
So the only thing that's changing is maintenance is not going to do it?
Maintenance won't be doing it. It will eliminate, we hope to eliminate the vast majority, any way of, any of those calls. Because what we've had to do in a few cases, honestly, where we've had repeated alarm calls at the same building, we've started to, you know, they've started to share in some of that cost a time or two, because, you know, we've got to get them to handle all this. We think this will help with it, just another step in the progression to get that where it needs to be. I think it's worth a try, you know. Again, we have a lot of folks that drive to Nelson County and work and live here, and it, you know, if we have this, they can choose something in the building, there'll be a reward for them doing it. There's a lot of folks that live close by, I'm sure every one of our buildings had employees that live really close by that hopefully would be willing to take that on and hopefully help us get that resolved. Okay, the next page, there's no changes until you get down to the text. And, you know, we had, last year or the year before, I don't remember exactly, I think last year maybe when we started this, for a long time, we've had, schools will come in and say, we really want to have an extra football coach or an extra basketball coach, you know, and we'll raise the money, or we'll do this, we'll pay for that, or, you know, so the board opted to add that to the schedule. And what the schools do is if they opt for a school-paid coach, they send the money to us beginning of the school year before the season starts, that person gets paid through the regular payroll process, just as if they were one of the typical paid coaches. The money just comes in advance from the schools. Does that make sense? And I think, you know, we just say here that the schools are going to be invoiced for the cost of school-paid positions, including fringe. All coaches, including school-paid, should be paid through the normal district payroll process, just to clarify. Now, I will tell you this, we had a meeting this morning with Mr. Broadus, myself, Mr. Beck, and Wanda Parker, and we added one more sentence that's not on this copy, but it'll be in your packets on the 16th. And it says simply, "No extra-service position shall require more than 130 work days in any given year." Now, the reason for that language is the Affordable Care Act. We have, you may be dealing with this where you work, don't know, when we hire an assistant archery coach, okay?
Consider variable hour.
You got, we've got to prove that they're not, we don't owe them health insurance.
So you have to do the look back.
We do all that stuff. We have a time sheet, we spend $1,000 on paperwork for somebody making $300.
It's no lie, it's ridiculous.
And we're just trying to, we've gotten some advice from American Fidelity Assurance, one of the third-party folks that service most of our lot of school districts, and we're going to work on some draft language that would go in extra-service contracts. And we'd like to run that by the board's attorney and make sure that they agree.
It was 120 days.
Well, actually, it's 140, but we're backing it up to 130, and it's because of the number of hours a day. We could, Wanda can get into the specifics as to why the number of days might be different from you with us, but 130 in our case is a conservative number. We went through all the activities today, this morning, with Mr. Broadus, and we could not come up with an activity, an extra-service position, where anyone approached exceeding 130 days. I mean, we tried to think of summer practice, Saturday games, and the longest seasons, and couldn't get close to it. So we felt very safe in saying, none of these positions require 100 and more days than this. And by getting this in procedure and policy and getting it in that contract, we eliminate the need to do all those time sheets and all that paperwork. And ADs, and ADs that are part-time, trying to track down coaches that are part-time, you know, after practice, you know, it's just that we're spending a ton of time, and there's really no reason for it, if we can avoid it. So that's the purpose for that addition. This is your classified scale, and it's just like the other one, it's just all cells have been increased by 2%. If you look at last year and multiply it by 1.02, you're going to get this year's number. The only other change is when a, when we hire a temporary person, okay, if we hire, if the superintendent secretary's out, she's out, let's say, we have to hire somebody temporarily to work for that person. The way, our current rules call, currently, our rules call for that person to be paid as a secretary one, just like any other secretary one that might be a full-time employee somewhere in the department, the first year on the scale. We just felt like it made more sense for us to add these, in red you see interns, account clerk, technical specialist for technology, maintenance tech interns, and vehicle maintenance tech interns, folks that may be hired on a temporary basis, somebody's out sick, extended leave, somebody's out of the country, they don't have, that doesn't happen very often, happens very seldomly, but instead of paying them, some of these folks, $12, $13, $14 an hour on a temporary basis, as an intern, they'd get $10.44 an hour. So we're just asking for a little flexibility there to be able to pay those temporary folks that are new in a position, temporary in a position, slightly lower rate.
Your temporary assistant is sometimes slow.
Oh, you're doing okay.
We're not paying them.
That's right.
So I say, we're not paying them. He's not even doing his job.
Experience credits, you know, we're just saying here, you know, we have had, but you've had, maybe where you're at too, folks come in a year, two, three, four, five years later and dispute where they're at on the scale. And all we're saying here is, any discrepancy in experience credit must be brought to the intention of Human Resources within 60 days of the start of employment, or any retroactive change to be considered otherwise approved change effective beginning of the following fiscal year. That's all we're saying. It's kind of on you when you're hired, you give us, you know, you bring your information to us, we make a decision. If you agree to it, this is what we're doing.
Or if I may rank three, and all of a sudden I finish my master's partway through the year, then I need to make sure I'm the one that comes and brings to you, here's the proof that I now got my master's, so whenever this will go into effect the next fiscal year, the next school year, we're good to go. I don't tell you, it's not your fault, it's my fault.
That's exactly right. Towards the bottom of that page, you know, we have changed the job classifications, which involve the following natural progressions, where we see years' experience on a one-for-one basis, and we added one because we have had some of that, we had some bookkeepers retired that moved out, and, you know, we added secretary to account clerk, because we want to make sure that if someone's been a secretary for five years and all of a sudden comes the bookkeeper, they ought to get that five years' experience. We want to make sure that that happens, and want to clarify that. So we added that there. Okay, over here, we added this, you know, over time, you try to cover as much that can possibly happen in writing as you can. I'm not sure we'll ever get there, but we try. Number five here, for those who substitute in an appropriate position, pay shall be determined by the superintendent based on qualifications and circumstances. And above that, you see some specifics. We've tried to cover 95% of things. But as soon as we try to cover everything, there will be a set of circumstances that arrive that those numbers don't fit. And that's when Mr. Orr down there gets to decide, you know, those special circumstances should result in this certain rate. And that's all that is, just gives us flexibility to do that. And this is similar to the language previous, I think it's comparing certified, the only difference is one's certified and one's classified, rank and experience in the 60 days. Is there anything in the very last item? Effective July 1st, 2015, there shall be no classified contract length, hours, days, revisions after October 15th of the fiscal year without approval of the superintendent.
That has happened.
Oh, yeah, it happens, you know, and what happens, what we're trying to avoid, you know, if there's a really, really good reason to do that, Mr. Orr's going to approve it, and he's going to tell us, suck it up, get it done, okay? He's going to tell us that. But what we're trying to avoid is where we add a half hour, take it away, add a half hour, take it away, add it, take, and we're just trying to avoid some of that. And, because that has happened, and this just kind of defines it, okay, get it done by October 15th.
And that's it.
Or that's, we're not going to be adding things after that unless Mr. Orr approves it, the superintendent approves it.
I think one of the other things that Tim mentioned, that you add a half hour and then you take it back, you generate that additional level of work to, and somebody's got to have a conversation to hand somebody a cut letter at the end, before the end of the year, when you're in a situation like that. Because those are typically temporary, they're one-time funds, it's principals that get toward the end of the year, and they want, they don't want to run that balance into the next year. And so they'll say, well, I'll get a little extra help in this task, or I'll get a little extra help in that task. And in reality, what you're doing is you're setting up potential for recurring costs with one-time money, basically. And so this encourages people, honestly, to say, maybe we set that aside for technology if we've got that kind of money. Let's do something that moves us forward in a more tangible fashion than the temporary expenditure, giving somebody a little longer day.
Forces us to make more strategic planning earlier in the year and more budgetary planning early in the year instead of at the last minute, too.
It does focus on that part better.
And that's it for the salary book, I believe. Oh, I'm sorry, I've got one more. This is your salary classified employees, this scale mimics, mirrors the certified scale. It just, instead of rank five, it's leveled, whatever the corresponding level is. And you have your salary classified employees that fit into those cells accordingly. It's identical in every other way, so.
1.02?
Sir?
Multiplied last year by 1.02?
Yes, sir. And we've checked the math. Somebody else did.
And someone checked you.
Yes. I think it's right. And that's it on the salary book.
Okay, moving on to three, workers' comp insurance selection.
Last year, we recommended that you move to a policy with KIMI, Kentucky Employers Mutual Insurance. We're recommending that you renew for an additional year with KIMI this year. The good news is, we've joined the State Chamber of Commerce, we have received our revised quote with 10% discount. Last year, our quote for workers' comp was $118,092. That was on unestimated payrolls. This year, with the discount, the rate is 121,591.19. But if you factor, you consider that we had to give a 2% raise and a 1.5% step, essentially the rate's the same, it's flat. So that's good news, we're not spending any more money on workers' comp, and we will, again, that number may drop, it may go up slightly, depending on how actual payrolls come in. We estimate it for that, at this point in the game, at the end of the year.
What's our EMR?
Our mod factor? I think it's .82, it's under 1. It was as low as .76, I'll have to get that, though, honestly, I may have it here, but... You're the first person all these years that has that, so that's good, I like it. The, where is the mod?
That drives your workers' comp.
It does.
Your incidence plus your, yeah.
I'll get that to you, I don't have it here handy.
It's not priority.
But it is certainly under 1, that's good.
As long as it's below 1, you can handle it, we can handle it.
One of the things that Sarah has been doing and Tim will be doing is working with KIMI and trying to control that mod. We keep that mod as low as possible, obviously reduces that rate. One of the pieces, one of the ways we do that is through the safety committee, you know, we're going to be doing some things with that real soon, so.
Work program.
Yeah, that's right. Sarah does return work, you know, Sarah and I talk about every workers' comp case that comes down the pike of any significance, we talk about all of them, and that's the only way to keep that under control.
Yep.
So that's good news, I think, on workers' comp.